Hello, good evening. Call to order the meeting of, what is this, August 26th. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands for a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have Spanish translation tonight?
Yes, we have Vivian Rodriguez with us tonight translating.
Buenas tardes y bienvenidos de parte de la Junta Directiva del Distrito Escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesite la ayuda, intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias.
And we have headsets for the hearing impaired as noted on our board, I think, yes. Announcements of closed session action, we don't have anything to announce. Acceptance of donations, I do want to note that there are 140, over $140,000 worth of donations here.
A little to our depth of appreciation.
Second? Hear a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes four with one absent, Nancy Harder is out this evening. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Well, I do have one introduction to make tonight. I'm pleased to introduce to the board two people from OAS, from Open Alternative School, Nitin Anan and Alejandra Tashma. Would you please come forward? With the retirement of head teacher and administrator Gwen Phillips at Open Alternative School, we have fashioned a shared leadership model with two head teachers, Nitin Anan and with Alex Tashma. Do you prefer to go by Alex? Whatever.
That's fine, it's fine.
Good. The Open Alternative Program started as a small school 33 years ago. It is still a small school. It is a community of learners, including parents and teachers and students. Both Nitin and Alex will be responsible for the health and the success of the school. Their responsibilities will include alignment of policy, curriculum, and student learning, and decision making. And if you know OAS, that is shared decision making. Alex will focus on the external responsibilities of the school and Nitin will focus on the internal operations of the school. That's a nice way to divide things. Nitin has been, well, let's see how it goes. Did you hear that? Nitin has been in the district since 2002, initially as a special education aide at the Santa Barbara Community Academy. He was transferred to OAS three years ago and has taught the upper grades at that site. Nitin graduated cum laude at the University of Maryland with bachelor's degree in anthropology honors program. His research specialization was in human biodiversity, colonial and post-colonial studies, ecological anthropology, and the history of science. He has a master's degree in education from UC Santa Barbara. Alex graduated from UC Santa Barbara with a degree in liberal studies and an emphasis on Latin American, French, and English literature. She received her teaching credential at UCSB. Alex's work in education began in 1987 when she worked at Cannolino Schools bilingual program. You weren't there then, were you? Oh, yes, you were. Our own Robin Sowoski was at Cannolino School. She wrote and implemented a Bank of America grant focusing on involving low socio-economic non-English speaking parents in the classroom. Alex helped establish Caesar Chavez Charter School, serving as the school's curriculum coordinator, district representative, and community liaison. She moved to Open Alternative School in 2003 and has been working there as a kindergarten first grade teacher. Congratulations, Nitin and Alex, in your new roles. Ms. Malakoff?
Ah, congratulations from us. We look forward to, it sounds like we're going to see more of Alex, but that's, we'll come by and visit as well.
Actually, that nice split, we're seeing it as being...
There's a lot of them, really.
It sounded so good.
Yes.
Well, we look forward to great things.
Yeah, thanks for the welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you. And that's it for presentations tonight.
Do you have a report then?
I do have a report. School is underway at, most of our programs are underway, I'll tell you which one is not yet. We've spent time this summer in planning and training and everything's been cleaned and polished and kids are in seats. Our staff returned with a renewed vigor for teaching and learning and the first two days have been fairly quiet. Quiet enthusiasm. In the elementary district today, we had 4,982 students. Now, Peabody starts on September 2nd, so that did not include Peabody. And homeschool Santa Barbara opens its doors, its doors on September 9th when the facilities will be ready.
So I'm sorry, those numbers did include the other two charter schools?
Santa Barbara Charter, I don't believe. It did?
Yes, it did. It did come in. The, in the secondary district, we had 9,517 students enrolled. We're awaiting numbers from Laquesta's Independent Study Program. And again, homeschool Santa Barbara begins on September 9th, so we'll have more to add to that. These numbers put us on track for our expectation that we will see enrollment increase this year in the elementary district and decrease this year in the secondary district, in the secondary district is grade seven through 12. But the official state count will not be taken until early October. We have seen that in the past, these numbers have stabilized over the first week and by Monday, we'll be able to put out numbers that clearly show where we are compared to last year and that'll give us a good, strong indication. I'd like to report, first of all, on the Board Brief. We regularly issue a report to the Board called the Board Brief. This is a collection of reports and articles on the district and school matters. Copy is on display in the reception area or in the superintendent's office. I'd like to highlight just three items out of the August 15 Board Brief. First, the Board Brief included lists and brochures on career technical classes and programs at each of our high schools. The Board will receive a report on plans for additional career technical pathways this next month. We also published a report on the high school district's dropout rate for 2006-07. The report indicated that our adjusted four-year dropout rate was 12.3 percent, far less than the county's 21.6 percent, and just half of the level of the state dropout rate is 24.2 percent. The point is that our rate is considerably below both the state and the county. And our figure of 12.3 percent probably overstates our dropout rates since students that move out of California may not be accounted for and may not actually have been dropouts. Finally, the Board Brief included a copy of the Department of Justice Report, Best Practices to Address Community Gang Problems, which is being used by our Community Collaboration Task Force on Gang Violence. And thank you for your responses, Board members, to me on, on what you saw in that report. We've produced a parcel tax information sheet for both the secondary measure and the elementary measure. Measure H 2008 is the measure calling for a property, or parcel tax in the high school district. And Measure I 2008 calls for a parcel tax in the elementary district. Both of these have been put on the November ballot. And legal counsel advises us that the information sheet that you have in front of you is fine and legal in all respects and can be shared with the public. We do have a right to notify people and, in fact, an obligation to inform the public about what the Board has done. And the language off of the sheet you will recognize is directly drawn from the Board resolutions. So we've provided you with a copy and additional copies are on the side table in the back. Board elections are coming up for three seats on the Board. There are six candidates running for our district's Board of Education. Susan Deacon, Annette Cordero, Ed Heron, Jacqueline Enda, Charlotte Ware, and Kate Smith are all running. And I see, of course, yes?
Maybe have these people, people stand up so we know who they are.
Sure. We have Annette Cordero right here. We have Susan Deacon in the back. We have Ed Heron, who's already standing, and Charlotte Ware. And we have Kate Smith. Good. And I don't see Jacqueline Enda.
Jacqueline Enda had surgery and is unable to get around right now.
Thank you. We have invited the candidates to attend an orientation this Thursday morning. Our staff will be on hand to share information about the districts and provide candidates questions, and answer candidate questions. And of course, you know, there's a lot of information available about the district and just our agendas are a good example of that, where you've got to stack two and three inches deep every other week to go through. And just a brief word about after-school programs. Our districts have an excellent partnership with the city's Department of Parks and Recreation. I'm pleased to report that all of the city's after-school sports and enrichment programs are being offered for free to students at our four junior high schools and are co-sponsored by the Police Activities League and by Club West. Our back-to-school nights are just around the corner. In fact, you'll see the elementary back-to-school nights on September 3rd and 4th. A calendar of the back-to-school nights is at your seat and copies are available at the back of the room. Prior to the start of the year, the following professional development took place in the elementary district. We had avid instructional strategies. We had science instructional materials training, new report card and assessments training, data analysis, grade level collaboration, English language development, instruction and assessment. And at the secondary level, we had professional development in math, data analysis, professional learning communities, collaborations, avid instructional strategies. And finally, in special education, there was an all-staff professional development on compliance review prepar, compliance review preparation provided by our district's attorney, Howard Fullfrost, and special education director, Anisa McNeil. Yesterday, in the homeschool Santa Barbara program, there were 97 students enrolled. More than 70 percent are non-district students, interestingly. And as I noted earlier, homeschool classes begin on September 9th, so we'll give you an update after the program begins. In fact, we'll be providing a lot more information about the program as time goes on. Yes?
To service, could you just repeat those numbers, please?
Sure. 97 students enrolled in the homeschool program. More than 70 percent are non-district students. The effect on enrollments is that very few of these students are from within the district and, and that, of course, will have an effect on increased elementary enrollment and it'll mitigate somewhat the decrease in secondary declines. And that ends the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Public comment.
We have three public comments tonight. First up will be Kenneth Locke, followed by Ed Heron, followed by Kate Smith. Mr. Locke, you will have three minutes.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I, I've been doing a lot of YouTube videos. I've been doing them daily somewhat and then just posting them up. I did a video today called Genius and the Standard for Gauging Intelligence. And what I'm bringing to the table is the means for gauging intelligence. What I'm claiming to be is intelligent in relation to art and then also athletics. And then what I'm providing the means for is understanding interdisciplinary intelligence. This community currently, I'm sorry to inform it, that it does not promote intelligence. It, it actually doesn't even know what intelligence is from my perspective. I'm gonna be, I might be for the city council and made them aware of the fact that this community is actually mentally ill, based on the fact that the school systems are teaching false concepts which promote delusional thinking. I would, I'm gonna try to, let's see, I'll probably see if I can get the city council involved. I think I mentioned, as I mentioned before, I like to get the, the school teachers to involved in a IQ test. But I want, I'm gonna see if I can get the city council involved in this and then maybe the, the community at large. I'm gonna get them to explain their intelligence, you know, it's kind of just how intelligent do they think they are and then explain technically how they are intelligent. And then if you can actually get a whole community to submit to this contest, we can actually identify who the most intelligent is and then the second, third, fourth, right on down the line. And once you have this, this in place, then it'll ultimately make the community more intelligent. Right now, there's no gauge for measuring intelligence and what the result of that is that the community, again, is not intelligent. And I'm hoping that this, the city council won't be meeting for, they meet today or the following week, so I'll be bringing this before them next time.
30 seconds?
They do meet. And possibly I could be, get this thing up and running and, and make this community more intelligent. Thank you.
Thank you. It's Mr. Heron, followed by Ms. Smith.
Good evening. I'm here to ask you unanimous consent to allow me to leave. I want you to know I'm interested, but it's my 41st anniversary and I have a date. And so I won't, I promise you, I will watch it on TV Saturday night as punishment and spend my Saturday night watching it. But I will excuse myself and it's gonna be a great race. I loved Michelle last night, Obama talking about world-class education and the, the need to respect people's views without challenging their personal being. And so respect and dignity is something very important to me. I think the adults, if we treat each other right, I think the youth will treat each other right. But if the adults don't, there's no reason for youth to not treat each other. They'll use different weapons. We use words, but they'll use different weapons. So dignity and respect for everybody is very important and world-class education. So Michelle was right on, as she was in a lot of things. It was a wonderful speech last night. But I hope I can leave and you won't hold it against me. Thank you.
Happy anniversary, yes. Thank you, Mr. Heron.
I'd like to wish a happy anniversary to you and your wife and children. I just want to tell you that when my husband and I got married, my father said, just remember it's only the first 40 years that are hard. So it's all downhill for you, now it's easy.
Well, my wife, during the 37, 38, 39 time period, was always one year off. And I asked, which year wasn't the one you liked? And she said, it wasn't a year, it was a day here and a week here. It totaled a year. That's it.
Our democratic society depends upon our children receiving a democratic education. Democratic education is defined as engaged, relevant, and socially conscious curriculum in a cooperative and supportive environment with a tolerance for diversity, accommodation for various learning styles, and a fair distribution of resources. We need to create the schools our children need and deserve. We have to create schools for the 20th, 21st century. We have to teach our children how to think, not what to think. Our children need to learn to communicate, to cooperate, to coordinate, and to collaborate. Our children have to learn how to problem solve and resolve conflicts. Aristotelian educational philosophy states, "That which we need to learn, we learn by doing." And children learn what they live. My platform is the same as it was eight years ago. I support parent cooperative elementary schools so that the parents and children learn and grow together. And I vow to dismantle the truancy program, which is criminalizing the low-performing Hispanics. It is illegal, unethical, and uncivil, and is housed in a toxic waste dump owned by Bill Levy. In the elementary school parent cooperative environment, children will learn to be compassionate, to cooperate, to be courageous and responsible, honest and creative citizens. It is my hope that the school district will partner with the city and the Santa Barbara City College Parent-Child Workshop and expand preschools so that every child has a head start.
30 seconds?
And then that we will emulate the open alternative school model. And I will promise you, in 12 years, this city and this school district will get the Nobel Peace Prize. And I say the Nobel Peace Prize because that would be a great way to spread the word around the world about parent cooperative education.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, consent agenda. We have 15 items. Anybody like to make a motion?
I have a question.
Yes?
On the consent agenda, at the...
At the last meeting, I think it was, there was an item that I questioned about the use of restricted lottery funds for some software. Could I, could I know the outcome of that because I don't see it on this week's agenda?
Our intention was to bring it back with appropriate funding, knowing that we didn't approve it. I don't see it on this agenda.
No, I didn't see it, but it is, it will come back.
Yes. I need you to get you that information. I will get that to you in the Board Brief.
Thank you very much.
Okay, back to the consent agenda. Anybody want to...
Move to approve? You want to pull something?
Yes. D1, D5, D8?
Uh, wait a minute. D1, D5?
1, 5, 8. 9 and 10.
9 and 10? Okay. Did I hear a motion for the rest?
I'll move to approve the rest.
Second?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes four with one absence. Okay, action agenda. E1, approval of international baccalaureate program feasibility study at Harding Elementary School.
The Board had a previous discussion on the possibility of undertaking a feasibility study for an international baccalaureate program for Harding School. Robin Sowoski, our Associate Superintendent for Education, will make this present, will actually introduce this presentation.
Okay, and I don't anticipate, anticipate it being a long presentation. We do have Principal Sally Kingston here, several staff members, and a parent from Harding School if you have questions or if you need specific items addressed. I don't believe, Dr. Noel, you were present at the presentation of the feasibility study and what it would mean, but I assume you got the information from it.
That's okay. I'm a great fan of the international baccalaureate program, so...
Okay.
And somewhat familiar with it.
Okay, well, Dr. Kingston presented the plan for going forward with the feasibility year, which takes a year to actually identify resources, to look at how the program would fit at the Harding School. She shared, of course, how staff members had, had done a lot of research in selecting this. One of the main reasons, as you see in the memo that I provided, for them selecting this type of program to look into for Harding School was the high expectation that it produces with the rigorous curriculum and the whole notion of having an accelerated curriculum and instruction to really push the achievement level of students. And of course, there's lots of data to support that, that you, you really accelerate versus a lot of remedial. So the plan is to do the feasibility study this year. At the meeting in July, July 8th, a couple of board members asked a couple of things so that it, and bringing it back, it was just on conference. Two specifically, they wanted to know about what the other elementary principals thought of moving forward with this. And then what about a feeder pattern with the junior high and onto high school, which of course we have at Dos Pueblos currently. And it was a little bit difficult at first to get feedback because some of the principals were gone on vacation, but ultimately I was able to either get written feedback from email or speak to every principal. So just as recently as last Friday, I was able to, in a breakfast meeting, talk to several principals who I hadn't made contact with. The overall feedback was very positive. They feel strongly as a group that individual schools should move forward and investigate at least programs and practices that really fit the community, their school community. They also said, you know, if, gosh, if it works at Harding, would we be able to potentially try it in the future at our school? And, and that's, of course, an option that we would have. I mean, if something works well and a school, a staff really buys into it and is supporting it in the way that the Harding staff has done so, that is certainly something to consider, like Core Knowledge and, and those kinds of programs. The other piece about the Harding School, the early program years for IB, is that at the end of sixth grade, in this case, when students from Harding would move on to a junior high school, it would be, you know, probably an ideal situation to have a feeder school that would, would go forward with the IB program in the middle years and then on to high school. But it's not a necessary piece of that program. Those students who leave Harding, we want them to be able to go into any rigorous curriculum at any one of our schools. And so we would be looking, in, in the case of the school that Harding studied, it took seven years for them to actually be certified as a IB school. So starting next year, in fact, there's already been discussion with some of the junior high principals about having a feeder program at a middle school. So we really want to ask your approval to go forward this year with the planning feasibility stage and at the same time, be looking at the possibility of a junior high level if, if that seems like an appropriate next step. Again, it's not dependent upon that, but it could be a nice option in our district. We're also looking at a pre-AP program at junior high to match, you know, to feed into our AP program. So very similar idea of high expectations and different options in our district that likes lots of choices. So I'm here to answer questions and maybe more specific questions. Wow, we've got even more staff here. A lot of staff.
My worry with it, with the feedback from the elementary principals is the way it was gathered, because my, my concern was not just how do they feel about it? It was if this moves forward, I think pretty much right away, the Board will need to create a Board Policy so that we know when neighborhood schools, this is the first time a neighborhood school has picked up an entire, I mean, a new program. We have junior highs and high schools that have picked up strands here and there, IB and Core Knowledge and so forth. But it's the first time that a neighborhood school has sort of moved out of the standardized curriculum across what, what all the schools are doing. So, did you want to address that?
I wanted to say that actually, the IB program does not move them out of our standardized program. They will go through with all the adoptions, all of the...
Right. And I should clarify... And I should clarify that. I realize it's the same texts that are being used.
Absolutely.
And the same, and they're going to be addressing the California standards, but there will be other things that are implemented as part of it.
Like a second language.
That sort of thing. But my concern was really, the board needs to craft a policy and we need staff input. When is it that a neighborhood school gets to choose a new program? And then how does it work with our students that move from school to school? Because we have many students that start at McKinley, they end up at Harding for a while, then they go to, you know, Roosevelt's. And so the schools, even though it's going to be in a different program, all the neighborhood schools need to be able to address that function. And so I'm willing to move forward with the IB program, but we need to quickly have a board policy on this situation. And so we really do need the elementary principals to have that conversation because I don't want us to be talking heads up here and to create it here. It needs to be created on the ground level.
I, yes, I understand what you're saying. To the degree to which a student moving in and out of the program, would it be detrimental in some way? I don't know that as part of their feasibility...
I feel like none of the principals know what IB... I mean, it sounds great and we, you know, when you see it, it sounds really impressive, but the technical details, I don't think that any of the other elementary principals probably know.
And probably Harding doesn't know all of that either, because again, it's a year, a feasibility year. I know that the other principals are very interested in having Dr. Kingston come and just talk about it at a principals' meeting. I know we'll do that, just so that we all are kind of understanding, you know, where it's going. We're always interested in what other schools are doing. We do have students who move in and out of Core Knowledge, and that program, my understanding to the way it's framed, although they follow the standards and they're aligned to our curriculum, there are, I believe, more pieces of that that are actually different than the IB program in some ways, particularly their history, social studies units and...
Right.
How they flow. So we have that situation already to some degree.
Well, we do, and we do with OAS, and I mean, there's schools... Those are completely schools of choice, though, as opposed to our neighborhood network.
Our neighborhood school, which of course, I should clarify that again. This is not going to be a school of choice where it's, you know, attendance area is forgotten and other kids can come. It will be in our district, and of course, transfers can be accepted, but the attendance area students will always have their first priority for attendance, and that's who will attend that school, just as they do now.
Hey, I comment on that as well. We're asking for your approval to move forward on the feasibility study, and that's part of, I think, the larger context about thinking something through in a very careful and thoughtful way and not jumping at a program and saying, "Oh, yes, that's what we want to undertake." And part of that feasibility study will be to share that information with other schools as well, but we can certainly bring back language about specialized school-wide programs that would affect, would affect an entire neighborhood school.
Well, I actually think in terms of our secondary district as well, when probably all of the principals would have appreciated it if they had gotten notice before some things were approved at some of our schools. And I don't know that that necessarily happened, so that's something for us to think about. But I have a question for maybe Dr. Kingston. When you're doing the feasibility study, this first year, how much of the Core Knowledge... Sorry, I'm going off on the wrong one already. How much of the IB program is implemented?
For this year, how much will implement? I would suspect we'll go, as Bill Tolstrips said from Elk Grove, as fast as we can and as slow as we must. We have other things on the table, like the new report card. We're really looking at including more students in special education, using core curriculum in that program and really bringing that up to speed. So I see for sure I will get training. That's part of what you have to do in the first year. We'll select a coordinator who will have to be trained, and then we'll see what the rest entails. We have set aside funds for our summer institute where teachers lead teachers in curriculum mapping and creating integrated year-long plans. So we have four days set aside in June, so that's a natural place to start to bring the training in. But between now and then, we have a major focus on instruction. I'm sure you've seen our scores. We are all working on that intently. So the top priority are the students before us now and what we need to improve scores, but this is more of a long-term thing. So for sure, the training for both the coordinator and for me. I also want to say I have a letter of support from Joanne Keynes, a memo to me, and that she has an interest in exploring an IB track at the junior high.
Yes, and I want to first commend you and your fine faculty for taking this initiative. Now, I want to give a little history I want to relate. Quite a few years ago, some folks who came from New Trir High School, not far from Adelaide Stevenson High School in Winnetka, Illinois, brought the idea of doing the International Baccalaureate Program to Santa Barbara, promoted it, went to Santa Barbara High School, and were essential, as they related, were read off campus, that there was just no receptivity to it. So they took it to Dos Pueblos, and Dave Cash was at Dos Pueblos, and Dave Cash, like Harding, saw the promise and saw the potential. And so that program is at Dos Pueblos. I believe it's a very successful program, but it's alone out there. My point has to do with systems, and I want to go farther than what you're going and farther than you're going. It seems to me that it makes most sense to look at systems of elementary, junior high, and high schools, and not to leave it with the gap in between, but to have a parallel strategy. If you do this, Sari Adam, it'll be, what, 16 years before we... If it takes eight years each, it's too long, and we really need to enrich these curricula sooner. I'm convinced that you've put your finger right on it. If you... This program, and it's not the only way to do this, but the effect of this on expectations and the school culture can be truly transformational, and that's exciting to see at Harding, but we need that elsewhere. I'm really pleased to see Joanne Keynes' interest, and I fully expected it. And they are having an articulated system on the west side with your school, with Lacumbre, makes a lot of sense. Now, where do they go to high school? DP is too far away, so I think we have to look at that. A comparable system on the east side makes a lot of sense. That could easily involve Franklin, for example, Santa Barbara Junior High and Santa Barbara High School. Now, I'm not saying that we should shove this down the throats of these schools, but I'm saying that this process, that your feasibility study, we should contribute district support and resources for so that it really is a more comprehensive vision that we're exploring with an eye towards benefiting much, a much broader segment of the community. That's all.
I just wanted to ask you real quick, because one of the points he's making about the, you know, eight-year process possibly for being labeled officially as international baccalaureate. The school that you've referenced saw results much sooner than that, correct?
Within the first few years. The reason it took them seven years, as they tell their story, is that they didn't have... We have all but really one person who's just ready to go forward, and that person really is supportive, but also seeing all the initiative, wants to make sure that we're prudent about what we decide to do and when. But they didn't have staff buy-in, so I heard stories as we toured the school around teachers who were very resistant and trying to be, bring people along and pacing because of that. So ideally, the process is three or four years, but again, we have a relentless focus this year on instruction and really increasing the accountability because we have kids that are just so poised to learn, and if the teachers choose to speak, they'll talk about how really based on our summer institute, this is the next logical step. We're already creating integrated units, but we don't necessarily have the guidance we need to make sure that we have no gaps in the curricula or overlaps.
Well, I just want to say, as I said at the July meeting, I'm very excited by this proposal, and I'm really optimistic that it will be successful, and I also applaud you for coming forward with this proposal. I feel like, as I said then, the fact that you have such a tremendous support on your, among your staff and among your parents, is, you know, almost the ideal of what any school could want in going forward with it, or at least pursuing a new program. So I want to basically suggest that it's up to the district and to the board and to the other schools to work out how that might transition, how the transition might happen, how other programs, other schools may or may not adopt the program. But as far as Harding is concerned, I would really like to see us go for, allow Harding to go forward, pursue what they're doing. Certainly, if it's successful, I think other schools will be excited by it as well, and we wouldn't have to shove it down their throats. They would be, you know, excited about trying to take it on as well. So I would really hope that we are ready to allow Harding to go forward, and I'd like to move that we approve the International Baccalaureate Program feasibility study at Harding School.
And I will second.
Can I ask one more question before we vote on this? I just have a question about what happens at the end of the year, whether it, I guess this is for you, Robin, whether it comes back to us or what does exactly happen?
As far as, you mean like a vote or something?
Yeah.
You know, we'll have to, obviously, through the year, you're going to get reports as those become available, and I'm sure the school will be sharing with us. I'm not sure, we haven't thought far enough ahead as far as... I think there should be something where you get some kind of evaluation on the progress so far, and the report from the feasibility study. I understand it's a year study, so there should be some kind of report, at least probably during the summer, I would assume. I don't know, Sally, do you know the timeline?
I'm not sure what the timing will look like, but I do know that our timeline will be that we will want to know how to plan our summer institute.
So by June.
Just what we do on the ground floor.
Right.
And that will be before, well, if we end on June 4th, we really will start planning early May or before, so...
Also, one point I wanted to make, this year, for the very first time, all of our administrators, K through 12, including preschool, I shouldn't include the coordinators, we will be having eight days together with our standards-aligned instructional leadership, professional development, and there's wonderful opportunities within that setting to talk about best practices, to share what we're doing. Every site's going to be looking at a school-based project, and I'm assuming a lot of what Harding or Sally will be looking at is this program in, you know, alignment with the other goals she has for the school. So I can guarantee you, there will be opportunities like we've never had before to share as a full system, in leadership in particular, and looking at our structures. So I think there'll be lots of opportunity for that.
Are we ready to vote, or you have something else? Go ahead.
I had some questions. I didn't remember to ask about cost, the cost of the feasibility study and the cost of ultimately making Harding a full-fledged IB part of the program, because I know it costs Dos Pueblos, what, $50,000 a year, doesn't it? Something like that? How much is it out there?
It originally cost about $40,000 a year when the district decided over the first three-year period to stand the cost of testing for students in those IB courses, and it hasn't cost the district anything now in the last year and a half.
But what's the campus pay? The campus had, the campus had to assume the cost.
The campus did assume the cost, and so students pay for the testing, and they, I believe they have scholarship or help those who have a financial need.
And then there are teacher workshops, training programs, things like that, that it takes to be a member of IB. That's my understanding. Keep your folks pretty busy.
They stand the expense of that as well.
Yeah. So, well, I would like, I would hope that the feasibility study would have costs, and I'm not saying that as an obstacle, because I would like to see the district create a, like a special fund, in accounting terms, and put some money into it and keep adding the money to it to make sure that these programs don't have to scramble for bucks from the parents until they're fully off the ground.
The good news about the fees is that we have a very thorough budgeting process for school site council, and so for this year, all of the costs are covered through categorical funds, and I provided that information in the last presentation, so I can get that PowerPoint, too. The annual cost is something around $8,000 to belong to the International Baccalaureate Organization. Training costs looked reasonable in the $500 or $600. If you go to off-site, of course, I would prefer for the whole staff to be trained together when possible, at the time we've already set aside in the categorical, with the categorical funds. We created, working with Chris Robertson and Lane Wheeler and Robin Swawsky, a first-year way to pay for the coordinator on an hourly basis as we're just exploring this. And in terms of a second language, we have an enrichment program that's funded through the categoricals that could assume a second language as opposed to vocal music. So as we look at the budget, it looks like we could move forward with our categoricals. Of course, we love a special fund, but I also know the status of the district budget may or may not support that.
Well, I'm not asking, I'm not saying it with only Harding in mind.
Yeah.
I'm saying it with this broader vision that let's anticipate the possibility for other schools, and let's be prepared to provide the support. Not everyone may be as clever.
Can we come back with that, then? Maybe we should come back with that, and we should just deal with this right now.
I would like to see us come back with the whole idea of a broader systemic approach to this.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have a vote? We have a motion and a second? My second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes?
Four zero.
We wish you success.
Thank you.
Approval of response to grand jury regarding anti-crime efforts report.
The board had a discussion at its last meeting based on the draft response to the grand jury on anti-gang efforts. We believe we've incorporated what we had heard from you at that meeting, and Michael Gonzalez, our Director of Student Services and Compliance, will be bringing, is bringing it back to you again for your approval.
Thank you. We presented the initial draft on August 12th. The board suggested a number of revisions clarifying or correcting inaccuracies, and I hope your direction is embodied in the report, as is, staff is recommending at this time that you approve the response, and we will meet our 90-day deadline as required by the grand jury.
I just had one very quick comment, sorry. On page two, I noticed that you did add in a lot of the programs that we are involved with regarding parent education, and I was wondering if Padres Adelante was one that should have been included there?
The Padres Adelantes focuses on a number of issues that do not speak directly to the issues of youth violence or gang violence. In our response, we focused on programs that do touch on that particular thing. Padres Adelantes is an incredible program that we hope to expand throughout the district, but I've sat in a number of those sessions and presented in those sessions, and they're not really about delinquency issues or youth violence issues, and that's why I did not include it.
Okay, thank you.
I just had some comments on the, I think it's just the introduction section. First of all, Santa Barbara school districts, it's plural, it's usually referred to using, you know, an agreement with, as a plural subject with a, you know, plural form of the verb, and in the introduction section, there are a number of times where it's the school districts... And in the introduction section, there are a number of times where it's, the school districts shares the concerns instead of the school districts share, and the school districts is instead of are. So, I would appreciate it if we could go back through just the introduction and make it correspond with the plural subject.
Thank you.
And then, my only other comment is, in the second paragraph, there's a sentence, while students may have exaggerated in the survey, and I just felt that that whole sentence was not necessary, that it's addressed. There is a survey that we have results of, and the school districts have requested assistance from UC Santa Barbara consultants to assist the districts, and maybe we could just eliminate the sentence before that.
May I ask, if that is the consensus, the board will certainly delete that sentence.
Anybody else have an opinion on that particular sentence?
Well, I think that whole paragraph is objectionable. Basically, it says that the district is going to hire a consultant to refute or question the validity of the Healthy Kids Survey, which for three consecutive years has had consistent results, which West Ed backs methodologically, but we don't like the results. So, we hire a consultant to question them. I think that is wholly objectionable. So, I, you know, but that's only part of my problem with this thing.
I was going to say, but it is accurate because we are doing that. So, I would agree to remove the one sentence that you identified.
I would agree also, but I'm not sure, my preference would be just to leave it in, but we can take it out, so it's okay. I don't see Dr. Hayden here to address this, do I? No?
I have a macroscopic, a macro observation. Were you first?
You're done, okay. Yes.
I'm going to vote against this, because I believe it is a bureaucratic gloss over a set of very substantial problems. And I find particularly objectionable the fact that on, that there are pages seven through 10 of texts in the, page seven, page eight, page nine of the report from the grand jury.
Of the, yes, so the anti-gang. Of the grand jury.
About which contain poignant, credible, relevant concerns that the response simply ignores. And I recognize, and I view it with great skepticism, if not cynicism, that the district has zeroed in on the formal findings, but it missed, but it has said nothing about this content. And this includes issues about the district's failure, for example, to accept a recommendation by the police department to do something about minimum days to avoid having students congregate. And we know what happened as a result of that. I read that, and I read it with horror, that somehow through our institutional inability to act on these issues, that tragedy happened in front of Saks. I'm not saying it's our fault, but we could have done something that would have prevented it. And that I find totally unacceptable. And we don't address anything about that. We don't, well, I don't want to go. I get, I'm very, I find this, I find this such a gloss that it's an insult to my intelligence, and I think it's an insult to the intelligence of the grand jury. And I'm going to vote against it, and I'm going to write a minority report. Thank you.
Once again, I feel like I'm in a position of having to clarify a comment, or at least object to a comment, because I think it's misleading to the public and sort of unduly sensationalized to suggest that because we didn't change our minimum day practices, that that directly led to the situation that happened on State Street. I think we have information from law enforcement themselves indicating that that was likely going to happen regardless of the minimum day situation or not. Mr. Gonzalez and I were at a police gang task force town hall meeting less than a week before that event occurred. The police were trying to grapple with issues. One could easily say that the police failed to prevent it. They identified that they knew gang violence was increasing, they were very worried that something like this was going to happen. But I don't think they, I don't think we should necessarily blame them either. I think the issue was that it was something that was coming to a head, people knew it was coming, but nobody could predict how or when. And if it didn't happen at that time, unfortunately, I think it probably was going to happen at some point. And I just think it's unfair to the public and to our school and our school employees to suggest that somehow we were responsible for that tragedy. I also think it minimized the systemic issues in our community that led to that tragedy. It certainly wasn't just an issue of whether we had minimum days or not. There are many, many, many factors that contributed to that true tragedy. And I don't want to see us use that as a way of sort of pointing fingers at individual groups, because I think that misses the point of, you know, what led to a young man's death. And that's a disservice to him as well as to the rest of us.
May I respond?
Actually, I have the floor. That is true. My concern with what Dr. Noel has said is that actually the grand jury does an excellent job, I feel, of pointing out the issue and then stating what was done by everybody. They are the ones that do the full summary of before, during, and after. Our job is to write them a report based on their findings and recommendations. And Dr. Noel, I mean, what you're suggesting is far out of line for what we are, what they expect from us. And so, I'm, you know, they may be interested in your minority report, but I would be disturbed if we were not following the format for what they expect their responses to be in.
Can I have the floor now? I'm going to quote from the grand jury, the text of the grand jury report. "In 2004, as a result of an increase in gang activity, a gang specialist from the police department recommended to the school district that they stagger minimum days to avoid congregation of gang members on State Street after early dismissal. Minimum days, according to police officers, were called, quote, 'gang fight days,' close quote. At the time, the school districts did not act on this particular recommendation, creating instead a policy of zero tolerance of gang attire, gang colors, and symbols, and gang behavior. School officials began to provide T-shirts to cover offending attire and to bring students into the office to warn them. However, in 2007, as soon as a gang confrontation resulted in a student's death, the district acted within hours to review its policy and eliminate most minimum days." Now, I read that, I believe as any member of the community would read that. That's a very poignant statement by a group of responsible citizens who spent months studying this problem. What I'm objecting to is that we don't address that or anything else in the text of their comments. We go to the, to the much more benign findings.
May I respond?
If I could just, since we're quoting from their report, I think it's important to say, to also quote where they acknowledge, "The school districts are now better equipped to deal with the most dangerous youth." So, I think they recognize that, that situ, I don't know to what extent it would be, not only would it not be in keeping with the format, but I'm not sure to what extent it would be useful to talk about something that happened two years ago, when the grand jury themselves acknowledged that we have acted to correct a lot of that already. So, other than saying, yes, we have, which I think is part of what we say, I'm not sure to what extent it would be useful to continue to have that discussion, rather than focusing on what we are doing and what we plan to do in the future. To go back and talk about what we didn't do in the past seems unnecessary.
Mr. Gonzalez?
I want to share with you, I would draw your attention to attachment A that I can't show you on the overhead, but it's behind the grand jury letter dated June 12th, 2008. The directions to the agencies involved in this report are very specific. I will quote to you, responses, again, I'm reading from attachment A. It's underlined in bold, "Responses by affected agencies to the grand jury reports. Section 933.04 of the Standard Penal Code for the State of California provides explicit guidelines for responses from agencies affected by findings and recommendations contained in the grand jury report. For your convenience and assistance, applicable provisions of the code have been summarized below. And as you peruse grand jury findings, next section, grand jury recommendations, you will find that this report follows exactly the format provided for them. I do not wish to minimize the concerns that are being raised here. Indeed, they're very important. But at the same time, I want to share with you that our responsibility is to follow penal code law in responding to the board, and that's what this report represents. No more and no less."
And I guess my quarrel is that it does no more.
We have a public comment.
Yes, Kate Smith.
A complaint procedure is the most important procedure for the community and for the district. And there has to be a good one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Smith. I thought you had handed this on E2, but you're actually on E3, so I'm going to hold you off. Thank you. No, we don't have any public comment on this.
We apologize, we're still on the one before that.
Well...
Want to speak to E2 on the anti-gang efforts report?
Well, in terms of anti-gang efforts report, I will say that $400,000 for anti-gang personnel seems ludicrous to me, that the children have to be brought up knowing how to resolve conflicts. And I will say that when I was involved with difficulties with personnel and policies of the school district, I went to Michael Gonzalez several times, and he refused to assist me.
Well...
On that note, I will move to approve the response to grand jury, to the grand jury regarding anti-gang efforts report with the agreed-upon corrections.
Second.
Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So, it passes 3-1 with one absence.
Thank you.
And Madam President, as I say, I will write my own dissenting opinion about the board's action and the district's response.
Okay, we're on to E3, the second reading of board policy and administrative regulation, complaints concerning district employees on board policies.
You've seen this policy before, we took your input and are returning it again. Mr. Gonzalez will present this, but I would like to comment beforehand. If you look at the AR and you look at item number seven, which provides for an appeal and investigation based on the appeal, I am recommending that we not have an additional layer of appeal to the Board of Education beyond that already provided in AR number seven, or actually finalized in AR number seven. I think it should end with the language at the end of that, that the party should consider and accept the superintendent or designee's decision as final period. And frankly, I don't think we need the last sentence, nor number eight, nor number nine, nor number 10, nor number 11, or 12. And here is my reasoning. There is no legal requirement that we have this policy in place. In fact, we do have legal requirements for complaints. If, for example, a complaint is due to an illegal action, then we have a uniform complaint procedure that is required, that is in place. If, for example, we have a specific instructional materials complaint that's covered under the Williams settlement, we do have a complaint procedure in place for that, that is required. I believe that this policy provides an, already provides an appeal, for an appeal process to the superintendent or designee. This new policy may attract various complaints. I mean, they may be things like, I don't like my child's teacher, I want my child in a different class, I think my child got the wrong grade, I, my child should receive the principal's award, or my child should be the speaker at commencement. I mean, we hear a lot of complaints in the course of the day. And I don't think that the, it's appropriate for the board to hear all such complaints. I do think it is appropriate to have an appeal process and have an objective review and have a decision made so that that's finalized. But I think you might possibly be overwhelmed with various complaints. People do have the right to address the board. They can come to public comment, they can address the board every time we meet. They have the, certainly have the right, and people do follow through in letting you know what their concerns are by email or letter. And I think that the remaining part of this policy is not only unnecessary, but I think it opens the door to a lot of other uses of your time. I've discussed this with Craig Price, he's here to answer any questions about that, should you have any.
Well, in our policies that we're going to go over tonight, there are lots of times when people can come to the board for an appeal. And it was actually kind of surprising how many different things there were. So, we're going to, it sounds like we may be revisiting this, some of that later tonight.
True. So, Mr. Gonzalez may have something?
I think I would only share with you that if that is the direction of the board, that we would come back to you with a third reading of the policy, rather than do any wordsmithing here, if that's the consensus, that the board wishes to pursue the deletion of the language that the superintendent is suggesting.
I think I would like to hear public comment on this before we...
Sure.
Kate Smith?
I'm for E3.
This is E3.
The complaints concerning district employees or policies?
Yes.
I'm very concerned about this, complaints concerning district employees or policies, because there is absolutely no mention of ethical, civil, or legal codes. That's the only reason that you would have a complaint. I do hope the board is not considering micromanaging to the point that we're listening to parents complain about the grade that their children received. We're not talking about complaints for subjective issues. We're talking about complaints of violations of the law, under which the district administrators, staff, and employees, teachers have to behave. On our district attorney's office building, it says, "The law is the voice of the people, and justice makes it heard." This is what we're talking about. If an employee violates a code, ethical, legal, moral, or civil, then there is a complaint. It says, "Every effort should be made to resolve a complaint at the earliest possible stage. The complainant should communicate direct..." The complainant should communicate directly to the employee in order to resolve concerns." There's a problem. We have not set up the means by which there should be that communication. Sometimes a parent will come in when the teacher's trying to teach the class or prepare for the class, and they will get into an argument because it's not the right time or place. I think that needs to be established, what the right time and place is, what the proper situation, and how to communicate properly. You can't have parents coming in accusing and threatening and violating the teacher's civil rights. And as in my case, I had an administrator call the police on me, false arrest, because she didn't like what I was saying. So, we need to work on conflict resolution and communication skills. It says, "If a complainant is unable or unwilling to resolve the complaint directly with the employee..." Come on now, it's not a unilateral situation here. We need to understand that there are rights and responsibilities, and that there are always two sides of the pancake. I appreciate your work on the board.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I'm a little...
Oh, do we have another?
So, sorry, Mr. Wheeler, I was going to completely forget you. We do have another one. Mr. Wheeler.
How could you forget me? Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to address the board on this. I believe that when the agencies that are charged with the proper responsibilities work in a collaborative fashion and with a common goal, that oftentimes these issues are put aside. And we have a procedure in place. This one is a well-written piece. I would agree with Mr. Gonzalez that further wordsmithing doesn't need to be done tonight. I would also agree with Dr. Sarvis that up to seven, I think we have a great policy. Beyond number seven, we certainly get into a gray zone that we don't want to have a public forum out of every complaint that comes forward. And I do believe, as Dr. Sarvis said, we have a very proper and able system right now to address those complaints. My common conversations with board members on a regular basis indicates to me they have absolutely no problem hearing from the public about issues that come forth at school sites, maybe to the point where it almost loses some of its credence because it comes so frequently. So, I would ask you to look at this policy carefully and particularly pay attention up to point seven. And beyond that, really consider what the true task of the board is, and in terms of moving our district forward in a proper and expedient way to provide the best education for students and a proper and beneficial work environment for educators. So, I thank you for your time and ask your indulgence on this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you...
I don't have anything in my folder for E3. I'm trying to wave my flag here. But I am a little concerned that what Dr. Sarvis, I think your list of these mundane complaints may tend to trivialize situations that could occur, and I certainly see that we don't want to flood the system with those complaints, and that they can be dealt with administratively. But if the complaints have to do with unprofessional conduct by administrators, for example, or violations of the law by administrators, then I think that for the complainant to be able to loop around the administrative process and go directly to the legislative body, namely the elected board, is terribly important.
I would reiterate that we already have complaint policies in place for legal violations, and the board is tied into that process.
Can I just ask for a quick clarification? I know that this policy was sort of spurred by, the drafting of this policy was sort of spurred by an individual who wanted a complaint process in, and this is the part I'm asking for clarification on. I thought that what this individual was asking for was for a complaint process when you're complaining, when the person wants to complain about something that isn't violation of the law, but simply just not appropriate behavior, seems unprofessional. And so, this would, this policy is not intended to address those grievous sort of breaches of the law or serious ethics or professionalism violations, because we, as Dr. Sarvis said, we already have those policies in place. This one really was intended more to address any kinds of offenses or perceived offenses that don't rise to that level. So, almost by definition, we're talking about, I don't want to say trivial, because certainly they're not trivial to the people who are involved in them, but less serious issues that arise.
That's true. This is for generalized complaints about personnel or about policies in general, just to make it clear to the public that you do, you are able to come forward with a complaint. We're not precluding your ability to complain about just about anything, and that we have a procedure in place for that. I think input from Mr. Price is appropriate, though, on this.
I think this discussion really gets at something that's been confusing to a lot of people. Well, it's been confusing to me, quite frankly, for some period of time, and I've re-looked at it. Obviously, we have a uniform complaint procedure. The way that that procedure is worded, it covers allegations that are made regarding violations of federal or state law or regulations having to do with educational programs. The reason that we have that policy is because it's required by state law. And originally, if you track it back, including in the California Code of Regulations, it's intended to cover, in effect, discrimination claims of all different types, as well as some other educational program claims. In this district, the application of that policy has been broadened to include additional allegations of violations of law or policies that do not necessarily implicate anything involving discrimination or categorical programs, for example. Because when problems arose or complaints arose, that was the mechanism that the district identified for dealing with a complaint, because that's what we had on our books. And instead of telling whoever this person or people have been in the past, gee, we don't have a procedure to cover you, we said, well, it'll be handled under the uniform complaint procedure. I think that, to my way of thinking, and this is totally a board decision, obviously, it would help in the future to come back with a clarification of the uniform complaint procedure so that it's clear to people that it is intended to cover allegations when there have been violation of law, or, if you wish, board policies, administrative regulations, so that there is a mechanism. As distinguished from the type of complaints that I believe staff had in mind, having addressed by this particular policy, somebody comes in and says, "The vegetables are undercooked in the cafeteria," and they want to run that up to the board. Well, as Dr. Sarvis said, you may not want to hear those complaints, et cetera. So, to have a, and as Dr. Sarvis very accurately stated, there is no requirement that there even be a formal mechanism by which there can be a multi-layered complaint process for complaints that don't implicate any kind of violation of law, board policy, or administrative regulation. But certainly by putting such a policy in that allows somebody to go to the next higher authority, that is something that has been recognized as optional and suitable by the California School Boards Association, and so they have such a policy that this has been patterned after. So, putting all that together, my suggestion is that if the board agrees with the suggestion that was made by Dr. Sarvis, that this come back for a third reading, I'll work with Mr. Gonzalez and tweak it in accordance with the direction from the board, and that we also bring back at an appropriate time, a revision to the uniform complaint procedure that would clarify it in the way that I tried to describe.
Sounds like a good plan. Does everyone...
I'd like to ask a question. The uniform complaint procedure, that, my impression is that's a very elaborate process, with written documents. Is that correct or incorrect?
Well, it's not as elaborate as a lot of things I see, but it certainly has, it certainly has a process that's attached to it, you know, by the nature of things, right?
If you're a poor, single mom who feels that something has been done that seems like it breaks the law, but doesn't have the time or the skills to even approximate a legal complaint or something like that, how would you handle the uniform complaint?
Well, I think that's a very good question, and one that I would prefer addressing when it comes back before the board, because my gut impression, without having reread the UCP recently, is that the elaborate process that is involved there is more in the way of a protection for the type of people that you're describing than it is a tool to exclude them. In other words, you know, just like we have procedures in the law that are intended to protect people, although it can cut both ways, that's why they're there, to ensure that they have the ability to be heard, and ultimately, if there's a violation of ed law that is alleged, to be able to go to Sacramento and take it to the CDE.
Well, for my single mom, that sounds very intimidating. Let me ask another question. What about somewhere between violating the law and not liking the food in the cafeteria, there seems to be some substantial possibilities. What if a district administrator uses offensive language, and not necessarily profane language, I think there's a law about that, but offensive language, insulting language to a parent? I don't, what, is that, I would, where I came from at the university, we'd call that unprofessional conduct. It doesn't rise to the level of the violation of law, as Mrs. Carder pointed out, but it's very serious. That person presumably wouldn't go through the uniform complaint procedure if that procedure were even open and inviting, and would have, under this policy, would then have the end of the appeal line with the superintendent. And just in terms of good institutional design, that's putting the appeal in the hands of someone who has a stake in the outcome because it's one of his or her people. So, how do you handle that?
Well, your board decides how you want to handle that, because that's your function, and that's what you're debating. But the, you know, the bottom line is, I think you are correct. Unless there's allegation of violation of law, it's not going to come in under a uniform complaint process. It would be something that would be handled, as it has presumably always been handled in this district, as it is typically handled in other districts, because administrators and the people that work for the superintendent are hired to deal with those problems and to deal with staff issues that has to do with, have to do with irregularities and inappropriate actions. And it's also their responsibility to bring those things to your attention, to get your approval at particular times. But generally speaking, it's regarded that those particular times are very limited in nature, and don't involve hearing out every single such complaint that comes in, asks respects all the many, many employees, certificated and classified. But ultimately, that's your call.
Is there any kind of rule about a person coming forward in public comment, because they're talking about an employee?
There used to be a widespread practice that said that during public comments, you shouldn't attack a particular employee, and you should follow the procedure, whatever that procedure happened to be. And then there was a federal district court case, the Moreno Valley case, in which the United States District Court said, no, that's unconstitutional. People have the right to come and voice their complaint, whether it's comfortable, and whether it might be embarrassing to the person, whether it's a fair attack or not.
So, and there...
And so, now, we have, as have other districts, removed any kind of a restriction. But I think CSBA, their policy, and I can't remember if we have it now, says that people are encouraged to pursue any complaint that they have along those lines in a different way, meaning going to the next higher authority.
I believe we crafted a special policy, remember, some years ago?
Yes.
That, if someone did that, said, "We recognize your right to say these things, but we encourage you to go through this complaint procedure." Now, we're going full circle, the complaint procedure.
Oh, I'm sorry, were you going? Go ahead, Ms. Carder.
I was just going to recommend that we go back to the original recommendation, which is to give direction to staff about whether or not, I think we're, it sounds like there may be some agreement to eliminate that, everything after seven. At least give them, give staff direction whether or not there is agreement on doing that, and then bring it back, rather than trying to wordsmith it. And certainly, I think we run the risk of getting off our agenda topic if we go too much farther in discussing the uniform complaint procedure, because that's not what we're agendized to discuss. And so, I worry that we are getting a little afield from our agenda items. So, I'd like to go back and recommend that we, I would like to suggest that we do direct staff to eliminate everything after seven. However, I would like to see, it doesn't necessarily need to be in seven as the final sentence, but I would like to see that idea remain, because even if we remove that last layer of appeal, any member of the public, staff, board, anybody, has, does have the right to address the board. So, although we won't be an appeal mechanism, they can, they can still address us about the complaint if they want to.
Both orally and written.
Yeah, exactly. So, but I'd like to see us do that and move on, because we are actually a little bit over time on this agenda item.
So, we'll end with Ms. Parker.
And...
I think if we're...
Actually, Dr. Noel, may I go ahead? She recognized me.
I'm sorry.
The, I think it would be great to specifically mention that the public always has the right to comment as part of that, but I want to really agree with Mr. Price, that it would be great for the UCP to come back together with this, because then we can address all these issues that Dr. Noel is raising, that maybe we can make sure if it's not in one, that it is in the other, because the California Code of Regulation says boards can make the uniform complaint policy broader. So, I would like to see them together.
Sounds like a plan. Dr. Noel.
I just am a little reluctant to eliminate items from a written recommendation that was presented to the public without a vote. It seems to me that if there's a consensus to eliminate those items, we should make that an explicit vote, so that it's very clear, rather than kind of a notion that, oh, well, the board, the board agrees, the board doesn't agree until it votes.
Okay. Would you like...
I move that we give direction to staff to eliminate the numbered items that we discussed prior to bringing this item back to us, this policy and AR back to us for a final vote. a final vote.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, and the no is because this throws out the, the heart of the point that I'm trying to make.
Okay, well, it'll come back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I say it passed? Did I say that? No, three, one, with one absent. Approval of Board Policy Administrative Regulation on Volunteer Assistance.
Well, this is a policy that's been in front of the board a number of times. We have spent time making sure, we believe, that in the administrative regulation, it gives clear direction so that, for example, if you were a, a school principal, you would know what is required of each of these volunteers. You would know whether TB testing is required, you would know whether fingerprinting is required, just as an example. And Elaine Alvarado will give this presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvas and board members. Again, as Dr. Sarvas just noted, we have been working diligently to bring this policy, 1240, back to you for review and board approval. In the interim periods that we've last met and spoke on this policy, we have reviewed the policy and the AR. I've, the Personnel Office has met with Board Member Kate Parker, we've had meetings with Associate Superintendent Robert, Robin Swawski, excuse me, Dr. Sarvas, Barbara Kiani, in the Superintendent's Office, and most recently, at a cabinet meeting where we had administrators review this policy as well. So, along with all of that, and the input and the editing and review, we find that it meets the interest of the volunteer, which is the most important part of this, as well as the administrators' collective bargaining agreements, because that did become a concern at one point, and as, and district staff. So what we've highlighted and what we've clarified, the most important part of it is though, are those volunteers who are, volunteers who are directly supervised, that do not require fingerprinting, and those that, who are directly, I'm sorry, who are not directly supervised, that, that require fingerprinting. And that is distinguished in the, the policy and AR, as well as on our registration form. We've identified the TB testing, we have budgeted approximately $10,000 for that TB testing for the volunteers. In addition, Dr. Robertson has, we've talked to secretaries, we've talked to administrators, we've been looking at various volunteer assignments, duties, that have come forth, like beautification projects or other classroom projects, field trips, chaperone assignments, because we want to identify that for, again, the principals, for the volunteers, for the site administrators, so they have a clear indication of what our volunteer assignments can be. And again, in collaboration with collective bargaining, we don't want to interfere with any bargaining unit positions. So we're working on that, we're finalizing that, and we will bring that forward as, again, to the administrators. So I feel that we have reached our, our final input on the policy itself and the, and the AR, along with the registration form, and would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead.
I'm just, it's really come along so nicely.
Thank you.
And I particularly like the school volunteer registration form. And I would like to see that used every time, and I hope that it is available in Spanish. I wish that we could see that, but I'm sure it will be available in Spanish, right?
It will be.
I just have one suggestion, and that is because, on the TB testing, my concern is that this is just, it's TB testing for everybody, even though TB is, you're at risk of it for, if you're prolonged contact in enclosed spaces. And my concern is that if, you know, mom and dad want to take junior to go on the field trip to the Art History Museum one time in the year, they're not going to fill out this form when I think that they should, for, even for just a single field trips, when it's overkill to have that person be TB tested, or those parents be TB tested in that situation. So in the previous version of the AR, there was a line that's adapted from ed code that I would suggest that we put back in.
Okay.
And it's for, in the AR, after the third paragraph, the third paragraph is, "All volunteers, either directly supervised or not directly supervised, shall submit evidence of an examination." So, and a new paragraph between that paragraph and the following one would be, "The superintendent or designee may exempt from tuberculosis testing requirements those volunteers who serve less than a school year and whose functions do not require frequent or prolonged contact with students," comma, sorry, parentheses, ed code 49406. And then, correspondingly, on the registration form, that last sentence where it says, "Please read and sign," it would change from, "I understand that I will be tested," to, "I understand that I may be tested for verification of freedom from TB." And then, also correspondingly, on the back page of Volunteer Procedures, it would be, "For volunteers directly supervised by certificated employees, the requirements would change slightly to complete the registration form, period, and then, 'Volunteers who are regularly in the classroom must have a current TB test.'"
Okay.
And then, in the final paragraph, there is a typo, instead of school parodies, it should be school parties.
Well, you really changed it quite a bit by allowing that flexibility. I think that'll help volunteers in quite a big way.
Well, I think this form is so good that, and I, I really think we need to know this about every single one, that I would hate to see teachers and principals saying, well, this is, you know, they're just here one time, let's not, let's not do this, because they, they shouldn't be TB tested.
And we are, in the Personnel Office, we will be following up on these and we will be keeping them, and it's just for informational, we want to have access, we want to be able to just track those volunteers and identify those as needed, and, you know, for, for future volunteer projects, et cetera, those types of stuff.
Do we have an internal TB test, any way to do that, or do they have to go to their doctor or whatever?
We do send our, all staff, employees and volunteers to the Med Center for TB testing. And we have three facilities, one in Golita and two in Santa Barbara.
Just a casual conversation with the nurse at City College who was giving me my TB test, said that they're changing that, that that may actually get loose, the-
Right, that's my understanding as well, and we have received an update from one of our district nurses as well, and we're waiting to hear more about the updates on those TB tests. We're very anxious to hear that, actually, and then what, how we can change that and what it can be offered and, and fits the ed code as well.
And how long is a TB test good for?
For four years.
Okay. Ms. Cordero?
I'm wondering if, did we reach agreement that with, I, I wanted to support Ms. Parker's suggestions or direction to staff, and I just wanted to know if we reached agreement?
Can we, can I make a motion?
Did we have to motion, have a motion on that, or?
Can, can I make a motion that we approve the Board Policy and AR 1240 with the suggested amendments?
We don't need to bring it back, do we? On our action agenda.
They're very straightforward.
Although, although I do need to ask for clarification, because the ed code regulation seems to me to be appropriate for the Board Policy. I want the AR to stand for a principal who needs to make judgments about people. And rather than saying that the superintendent or designee may exempt, I would rather have that be very, much more specific, that, that accept those who are, and just use the end of that and go ahead and exempt people in the AR. As you know, the AR is our administrative regulation, it tells us how to operate. And instead of giving us permission to exempt, I would like to have that ed code language in the Board Policy itself, and then we will go into the AR, and we will tell people that under this condition for short-term assignments, that people are exempt from TB testing.
So in other words, you, you would suggest, instead of having that paragraph after the third one, the superintendent or designee paragraph should go into paragraph two?
Probably paragraph two on the Board Policy.
On the Board Policy.
Yes.
But, and it could simply end that paragraph?
It, it could end that paragraph, yes.
But I, my, I thought you were saying was that you wanted a few extra sentences that actually described examples of when it wouldn't be necessary.
So in other words, should we approve the Board Policy tonight and then have the AR come back again, because we haven't seen it enough times?
I'm, I'm wondering if we could, if we could approve it with the revisions
Yes.
as identified by Ms. Parker and Dr. Sarvas, and then if we feel like we need to see it, to just have it come to us either in the Board Brief or
On the consent agenda.
Or bring it back on the consent agenda.
Well, as you know, the Board does approve Board Policy, and the AR is really our operation.
Although we, the Board can always request to vote on the ARs.
Of course, and, and we summarily bring ARs to the Board so that the Board can make those provisions as well. But I would agree, if you approve a Board Policy with this inclusion, then we'll bring back the, well, we'll put on a Board Brief, this language showing the Board Policy change, showing the specific language in the AR, and if you have any difficulties with that, then we can certainly bring it back for future consideration.
Sounds good.
All right, I withdraw my previous motion, and my new motion
That was my second.
is to approve the Board Policy with the recommended changes, and I'm, I'm not sure if I, we're going to approve the AR in this case, or if we just say, and then look forward to seeing the AR come to us in a Board Brief.
You ended it before the end, look forward?
I'm going to, I'm going to end it before the end, look forward, and just say-
That was my second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes four, zero.
Now, did you want to say anything about the AR, or?
Well, I hope that the AR will include what we discussed.
We will make sure that the AR reflects this inclusion in the Board Policy.
Perhaps with some examples.
Thank you.
Okay. We may not, not see this again, I, I believe, but I don't know. Board Action on Student Expulsion Cases.
In case 0708-95, I move that we uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second? It's, okay, you ready? Cordero and Parker, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
It passes four, zero.
In case 0809-01, I move that we approve the findings and the recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second? Cordero and Parker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes four, zero.
In case 0708-90, I move that we reject the stipulated agreement and, and, I'm sorry, I just moved that we object, that we reject the stipulated agreement.
Second? Cordero and Parker, all those in favor?
Aye.
It passes four, zero.
In the case of 0708-72, I move that we uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes four, zero. Great. We're on to the next page here, in the conference agenda, and- You want to take a, you want to take the break now?
Yes.
That sounds good? That sounds good to me, too. Okay, we'll, we'll break for about, little less than 15 minutes. Welcome back. We're on the top here to the report on the Community Day School Program for Expelled Seventh and Eighth Grade Students.
Well, we're sorry we had to hold this over from our last meeting, but, but we did want to give you this report, and Mr. Gonzalez, our Director of Student Services and Compliance, will begin the report.
Thank you. I'm going to summarize the attachment labeled F1 for the Board. First, I, I want to be clear for the Board and the public that the Community Day Schools are authorized to accept expelled students by law, first. And as you may recall, in July of 2008, you directed staff to begin to investigate the possibility, the feasibility of having our students who are seventh graders, who are expelled from our district, to, instead of sending them to El Puente Community School, to place them in the Community Day School. You may recall that we reported to the Board that this affects about 31, 32, somewhere between 27 to 31 seventh graders in any year, if we look at the history over the last four or five years. The result was that staff did meet with Kathy Abney and Robin Swawski, our Associate Superintendent, and Kathy was directed, Ms., Principal Abney was directed to provide an analysis for what would it take to implement such a program. And Principal Abney's analysis fell in four areas. She outlined housing needs, instructional needs, administrative needs, and student support needs, and I'm going to review that with you. In terms of housing need, you may recall that one of the directions from the Board is that at this time, you felt that you wanted to separate students who are regularly sent to the Community Day School and those students who would be expelled. Given that direction, Principal Abney suggested that in order to accommodate the junior high students who were expelled, that the Community Day School would need two additional portable classrooms. The estimated costs for leasing of these two portables, plus site preparation and installation, ran, runs about $100,000. Regarding instructional needs, it was the determination that if we're going to include junior high students at a Community Day School, two additional certificated teachers would be needed, one specifically with a special education credential. The approximate cost for two teachers would be in the neighborhood of about $156,000. In addition to the two instructional assistants would also be needed at an approximate cost of $40,000. Administrative needs, to bring our currently expelled seventh and eighth graders to our Community Day School does represent a challenge for administration. The recommendation from Principal Abney is that we would need to hire a full-time assistant principal at an approximate cost of $95,000. This position would replace the part-time administrative intern that is currently assigned to the Community Day School. That staff member is present here tonight. Finally, student support services, a full-time counselor to provide academic, personal guidance services, as well as referral services when needed, would also be required. And because of the unique situation that the part-time administrative intern has, that if we hired a assistant principal for this program, there would not be a need to pay for a counselor. We have a counselor assigned to the Community School, Community Day School right now. Altogether, it's estimated that the costs of housing our seventh and eighth graders at a Community Day School would run close to $400,000. The, we, we also looked into the fiscal impact, and though it's true that Community Days, or students who are expelled from the district, who are placed in a Community Day School, receive an extra stipend, I, I want to caution the Board about that, because our experience over the last five years has been that junior high students who are expelled are expelled later in the school year, they would not start the school year. So anticipated revenue would not really materialize. And so, the, the, the cost of the general fund or a categorical program will exceed the ADA that we collect from such a program. So I need to caution the Board about that. I think, I think I'll stop there and entertain any questions that you might have. Again, Principal Abney, as well as the administrative intern, Mitch Torino, for the Community Day School, are also present to answer any kinds of questions you might have for us.
Since I wasn't here last time, I, I missed that meeting, I wondered, wondered what the general recommendation was, whether it was a positive recommendation, despite, was there a, or, I guess I should ask, was there a recommendation?
See, if I can recall properly, and, and Robin, please chime in, there was no recommendation except to investigate- See, if I can recall properly, and, and, and Robin, please chime in, there was no recommendation except to investigate the feasibility.
Dr. Malikoff is actually referring to the, just our previous meeting where it got pulled.
Oh, I see.
Because of time issues, so we didn't discuss this at all last time.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that, okay.
We just held it over this meeting.
I gotcha, okay.
No comment? Um, I, just a question here for the housing needs for me. Um, it looks like the hu- a hundred thousand dollars, but that's, would the majority of that be one-time costs? I mean, in terms of ongoing leasing, portables is not that expensive.
That's true.
Members of the board, Ms. Parker, um, the approximate cost of purchasing a portable is about fifty thousand dollars. The approximate cost of leasing a portable is about fifty-five hundred dollars a year. You have delivery and setup charges, you have takeaway charges, you have site preparation, you have utilities, other modifications, so until we really know if we want to purchase or lease, and we know where we may want to place the portables, it's pretty hard to narrow it down. But, but, uh, it's about fifty-five hundred a year to lease and about fifty thousand to purchase. That's just the building, without being placed anywhere, or hooked up.
And of course, as our secondary district enrollment declines, there may be a possibility that we do have classrooms freed up. Uh, it's seldom the case that we have just the right configuration in the right location, but, uh, but that's a possibility.
I just wanna, I, I think the hundred do- the hundred thousand dollars that was listed here as an approximation would be, was referring to a one-time cost of purchase, is that correct?
Well, it says leasing, but it says plus site preparation and installation.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
I see, I see it listed two different ways, uh, I, I see it listed one way in the preparation of the board agenda item, and I see it listed another way under the memo from Kathy Abney to Robin Swawski. And I don't think, uh, a decision's been made either way. But, uh, like I say, estimating site costs is just a wild guess at this point, not knowing where we'd put them.
Could we have a, is it possible to have some sort of a compromise plan where it's not all the, the students are maybe appropriate to go to, um, community day school, and some may still go to El Puente for whatever reason? That we may, I mean, right now, we do do this to some degree, it's just a different ratio.
Um, let me share with you that the, the concern developed out of El Puente's concern about properly servicing seventh graders. They did not, or they felt very clearly that the needs of eighth grade students who are expelled from our district are being met at El Puente. Their concern was specifically the seventh graders. But in the model, the directions that we gave, uh, Principal Abney was to consider junior high students. So the answer, uh, to your question is yes, we could come back with you with a more detailed proposal specific to a particular grade level, and of course, the recommendation would be seventh grade.
I think in some ways that becomes more, even more problematic to provide them with adequate services because there are so few of them. Their ADA would be so limited, um, what we could do for them might just be so inadequate compared to what they have, even though, um, there are some issues with that at El Puente. I'm really concerned that they would get the intervention, that they would have, you know, we have a safe environment for them, all those things that they would need. But maybe, um, Ms. Abney could address that? Or Ms. Swawski?
I would just wanted to add that, um, not in all cases, but in many cases, those students who have been expelled are not a lot different than the students who are, are at community, uh, at the school right now. I mean, there's, you know, they have been expelled, obviously. But I think many of the services that are part of that program, whether or not they're in the same classrooms or not, but separate classrooms, could be addressed within that program, just from my conversations with Kathy Abney.
Okay. Uh, just so that, so you can address it all at once, um, can, since we're bringing this question up, and I knew I had seen this, and I was looking for where I had seen it, um, in the cover memo, it says that in order to expand community day school to meet the needs of up to thirty-two expelled seventh grade students. So, the, um, it sounded like we were talking about thirty-two students from seventh grade who were expelled during the two thousand, two thousand and eight year, and then later in the backup information, it referred to, um, twenty to thirty-three junior high students. So I wasn't sure if thirty-two is really the number of seventh graders, or if that's seventh and eighth graders, if the, the number of then seventh and eighth graders is actually larger?
The, the number of eighth graders is larger, that number should reflect seventh grade, and that, that's the concern, as presented from El Puente.
So the number. So the number is actually sep- is thirty-two seventh graders?
Correct.
Okay.
You're saying, um, cause, but it's not true that we expel thirty-two seventh graders per year?
Uh, no, it is, those thirty-two represent the number of students who are recommended for expulsion in any year. But the numbers that are actually expelled is, is lower than that.
Thirty-two, I, I mean, it just surprises me because maybe some didn't go through an administrative hearing panel, but we've never seen anywhere near that number in the past two years for seventh graders.
Well, wha- what, uh, what you're actually explaining is that they have gone through the administrative hearing panel, and the administrative hearing panel chose not to make the recommendation to expel. The administrative hearing panel's function is to determine if an expulsion is an appropriate course of action, and they're very cognizant of the age and maturity of a seventh grader.
So perhaps a more relevant statistic would be actual expulsions of seventh graders, because that's who would be going.
Well, Mike, I guess part of the question then would be, do, in your opinion, do you think that the hearing panel would be more likely to recommend expulsion for more of those seventh grade students if they knew that there was the community day school alternative, rather than the expectation that the students would end up at El Puente?
No, that's not my sense.
Okay.
Okay.
Then I think Ms. Parker's question is very relevant, then. How many, how many seventh graders do we actually expel in a year?
Well, uh, I'll bring you back those numbers when we, depending on what the direction of the board is. The, uh, I, I want to share with you that the number of expelled students, uh, though it's, uh, it, it will, uh, guide the housing issue, will not really guide all the rest of those services. That regardless if it's ten, or fifteen, or thirty, uh, the support services, you may recall, uh, that in the part that I did not read, the Education Code concerning community day schools specifies the kind of services that should be provided for students who enter a community day school. So those costs, if we want to follow the recommendations by ed code, are pretty fixed. It's the housing cost that, uh, that would be less than we're currently recommending to you.
Well, I mean, to me, it's a, it's a question then of, uh, can we afford to provide them with the, uh, best service?
Well, I guess my question would also be, the, the cost that is, that are, the costs that are identified in the memo, are they based on the number of students who get recommended for expulsion? I, I, it seems like they are, so if we're talking about the number of students who are actually expelled, these costs would be dramatically different.
Some may, yeah.
Uh, again, to clarify, the housing costs would be dramatically different, but not the support services, i.e. providing them with a instructor, providing them with an instructional aide, providing them with a very much-needed, I believe, uh, administrator, and, uh, counseling services, those are pretty fixed costs.
But it, uh, not to belabor, but even if, let's say we had ten seventh graders who actually get expelled, would we still then need to have two certificated teachers?
No, I think we would go down to one. And, and I, I'll, I would defer, if you would like, I would have Kathy come up here and speak specific to those issues. But it's based on a ratio, ten students, fifteen students, seventeen students would generate one teacher, not two.
Right, and then would we still need to have a full-time assistant principal? So, I, I mean, you're right, we probably need to address these to Ms. Abney.
Well, first of all, community day schools were created to take in district expelled students, um, that were nonviolent, uh, in the sense that they, you know, not the mandatory expelled, the guns, the, you know, the, the weapon types offenses. So we every year have anywhere from three to five students from the school board that are, we call them in lieu of expulsion because we don't send them to El Puente, but they truly are expelled students that are sent to us. It's been a real challenge, um, to not have an assistant principal position, because this is, they are absolutely, not just the expelled kids, but any of the kids at community day school, the most highly at-risk kids in our district, simply because they are so young, and they have no street smarts, and they just, you know, they're, they just keep, they act out in ways that are inappropriate, and that's what got them to us in the first place. You know, they, they had, um, behavior problems on their campuses, and they also failed classes on their campuses. Those are most of the kids that we have, plus then there are the kids that, that the board sends us that they didn't send to El Puente. But they are just incredibly behaviorally challenged children. They're not bad kids, they're just kids that, you know, they just have no impulse control at this point in their life. They will get that impulse control as they grow a little bit older, and that they, and as they get a little bit maturity on them, but right now, they are just, you know, if it's there, they're gonna hit it, and if it's there, they're gonna push it, and it's, you know, and so our, our goal is to, there, we enroll them at, at fifteen to one. The classrooms, we have no more than fifteen students in a class, and a teacher, and an aide, and that's just sometimes, you know, just keeping them far enough apart that they can't touch each other, push each other, shove each other. I'm, they're seventh and eighth graders, they just, you know, they're still in that puppy stage, um, boys and girls alike. So, um, if you add another ten or twelve kids, we need another teacher. Um, we definitely could use a special education teacher at this point in time, and particularly, many of the students that we see that are being expelled are special education students that need one or two resource classes, um, that, you know, would be better served, um, if we had a, at least a half-time or a full-time special education teacher. Um, we definitely need an aide in every classroom. But in order to kind of keep that three-ring circus going, and I don't mean that in any kind of a derogatory sense, but you do need a full-time administrator on campus, and you're looking right now at an administrator that runs four campuses. Um, and because these kids are so, um, behaviorally challenged and so needy, um, and they, they really do need somebody there to remind them of what's appropriate behavior, and, you know, sometimes it's just that timeout, sitting in a counseling office or an assistant principal's office, just to, you know, to, to let the steam, steam off, or to make that phone call to the parent, or, or whatever, you need an administrator for that. And so, you know, that, that's, that's a hefty cost, but it's also a service that, that we need to be providing, and a full-time counselor. Community day schools were set up to have full-time probation intervention, they were supposed to have mental health counseling, there's, it's a forty assets model that you bring in those kinds of supports from the community. Um, it's, it's always been a struggle to get those kinds of supports into community day school. Um, it's been a small operation from the beginning, and, um, I would encourage you, if you, if you want to go this direction and add, you know, even up to ten students that, you know, are, are being sent to us rather than sent to El Puente, um, to keep in mind that, that we also need to be sure that we provide the support services for these students. And I, you know, I hear Ms. Parker saying that we need to make sure that we provide those services. One thing we do really, really well is the one-on-one contact with the kids and, and providing that, um, much more nurturing approach than they get at a, at a junior high school. And many of these kids, they just, they go from elementary school, which is warm and caring and nurturing, and they hit junior high school, and they're going to six classes, and going to lockers, and, you know, moving back and forth down, you know, crowded hallways, and they just can't, they, they can't, you know, they just can't deal with that responsibility, and so we basically bring them sort of back into a more elementary model, they have two teachers and they move between two classes, which really gives them, uh, more of that sense of security, so we do that piece really, really well, and that's a, that's one of the good support pieces. But you have to have a lot of adult staff, um, in order to make that happen and to make it happen successfully. But we send most of our kids onto high school, and they're, you know, they're ready to go to high school. I get a few of them at La Cuesta, but I don't get anywhere near a large percentage. Um, most of them go to high school and are successful in high school, so.
But I, I wonder if that's true of students that are currently going to El Puente as well as seventh graders? I don't, I guess we don't really know, um, do most of them end up, uh, we certainly don't usually see them again as expulsions, um, so I presume that they're back in our district.
Well, and my understanding from speaking with, um, Mr. Gonzalez and Ms. Swawski is that Cecilia Molina has expressed a concern about the seventh graders that go to El Puente, that they really don't, there is no light at the end of the tunnel for them. The eighth graders can see high school, um, and so they, they do their rehab plan, they do, you know, whatever's prescribed for them by the board and by the hearing panel. The seventh graders aren't mature enough to really, um, grasp what it is that they need to do in order to get back to the district. And I think that that's part of the disconnect, um, and the feeling that maybe if they stayed within the district, um, we would maybe be able to better serve them. They wouldn't maybe necessarily see the light at the end of the tunnel any easier, but at least they would stay, um, within the district in a maybe a more nurturing environment, and, um, she's feeling that it takes about a s- a year and a half, three semesters, to get them through everything they need to get through to be successful, to actually return, you know, into a traditional school setting.
Is that correct, three semesters?
Okay. And that's hearsay, I haven't talked to her, but Mr. Gonzalez did, so.
Well, I just, I just have a question about the cost, 'cause I, I'm sold on the idea, I think, I mean, with the board, we raised some of these issues in our expulsion hearings or discussions. Um, I, I think for a seventh grader, it's a more appropriate place for the student to be at community day school than at El Puente. And to the extent that we can keep the students within the district, I agree with you that I think that's a much more positive approach for the students. Um, I think certainly what we're, what we're grappling with is the cost and whether we can, we can provide enough financial support to make it a positive experience for the students, and not kind of throw them into a, a situation that's not gonna work for them. So I'm looking at the cost, and I'm thinking, I'm wondering, I'm, I guess, if, um, if the numbers are only, for example, ten, okay? And, uh, I, I think that we might be able to pare down the cost more than just in the housing area, because we wouldn't need two.
You'd need one teacher, one aide.
We wouldn't need two teachers, we'd need one teacher, one aide. Maybe we could get by with, rather than a full-time assistant principal, 'cause you now have a part-time administrative intern, maybe we could get by with a full-time administrative intern.
I'm not sure that beast exists, but I would have to ask Chris Roberts about that.
I'm not sure it exists either, but possibly. So that, so that it'd be as dramatic as what we see here.
Right.
Um, because we're really talking about a smaller number of students, and therefore, it might be more feasible for us to be able to provide this proposal with the kind of funding that we would need to provide in order to, to really make it work for the students. Keeping in mind that, you, let's assume we're talking about two hundred thousand instead of the, up to four hundred thousand, that was estimated. That although the students don't necessarily start at the beginning of the year, so they don't generate the full thirteen thousand in ADA, they will be generating some ADA. So not all of that will be un, uh, what do I, reimbursed. Unfunded, so to me, that sounds a lot more doable.
Right.
Um, than the original, than the original number that I saw, um, in looking at this. And, and so I guess I'd like to kind of see us continue to, to look at this, continue to see how we can, how we can go forward with this, because I think all of us felt, have, have at different times expressed some concern about sending seventh graders to El Puente.
Yes, um, when you reduce the number of students to say ten, though, it, the maximum amount you're talking about would be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in ADA, and you, could be half of that amount.
Right.
Um, so even dramatically cutting the costs, maybe, we may still end up in this impossible situation where we're not providing something that's good enough.
Community day schools are very expensive to run, 'cause you have to keep a small ratio, I go in the hole every year. So, I, you know, and.
So, I, you know, and there, you know, truancy is an issue, it takes two or three buses for every single kid to get to the La Colina campus. I mean, it's, it's a challenge all the way around where we're housed right now and so it's an expensive program, even if you're not dealing with the expelled kids, just simply because in order to run a successful community day school, you can't have forty kids in a class. It's just, you know, it, you need to be able to have those one-on-one connections with them, small classes, you've got to bring them back into that more nurturing environment. So, it's not a program that's ever gonna make money. I think that that's something that you need to be aware of and it's just how much risk do you need, do you, are you willing to take if you want to go this direction, you know, you know, one teacher, two teachers, one building, two buildings, and the buildings are, you know, one-time cost if we purchase them, but it's an expensive program to run, to, you know, provide these kinds of services for this particular at-risk population.
But I do think it's very worthwhile for us to get that information, just targeted, you know, if we're looking at seventh grades, what's the estimated numbers, what's an actual estimated ADA and the costs? And, and then the other issue is location, because even if you need one more space, there is not one more space, we're not taking that thing away from OAS.
Yeah, really.
So, I, that would need to be addressed also.
Exactly.
So, we're coming back.
Oh, good.
All right, Ms. Smith. Kate Smith.
You just heard Ms. Abney say that there are special ed students that are being expelled. Do you not know that that is not possible because of Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act? Do you not know that by law, if you even suspect that they have a special need, that they are to be, or a special, a problem, a disability, that they are to be diagnosed, tested, diagnosed and treated? No, you don't know that. And the children who are exhibiting emotional or mental symptoms of problems, that it's your responsibility to seek, to test, to diagnose and treat, you are expelling them and sending them to La Cuesta, which is the kind of program that, for example, a, a boy with ADD cannot function and thrive in that environment. You're in deep doo-doo because David Gilbertson, who was an assistant coordinator in your special education department, knows what's going on here. And he went to Bill Saroni and complained about El Puente and the treatment of the students that have disabilities and are being shafted, are being criminalized, are being expelled. He's been demoted, but he is on the warpath and he is mobilizing the Hispanic parents whose children are being criminalized because they're truant, of course they're truant, they're having problems, they don't like it at school, they're not thriving at school, it is not good. Instead of Selpa paying for services, oh, you get to expel them and your test scores go up, don't they? Yes, because you are expelling the low-performing students. And they go into La Cuesta or El Puente. I will say it again, it is a known toxic waste dump owned by Bill Levy. And there was hundreds of thousands of dollars of renovations to the building. I will invoke the name of Cameron Boyce, one of the very few white students who wasn't faring well in school, so they threw him off his basketball team. They sent him to La Cuesta. Nobody said, gee, maybe we should test him for ADD or dyslexia. And he was murdered. You will hear from his father, who I talked to last month, and he weeps every night.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith.
Just to clarify, we are in compliance with special education requirements and manifestation determination provisions in expulsion cases.
So, we're gonna bring this back with seventh graders at a fewer number in, especially if we're already sending some kids to community day, that even subtracts off a few that, from the total number. So, anyways, just find out how, what the number would be and what would be needed and come up with some new costs.
And just to be clear, the direction is seventh graders?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Sorry. I have, here we are.
We are on target for the public hearing.
Yeah, so the two public hearings we have, I, I just want to address Ms. Smith on F2 and F3. They've been pulled because Ms. Renard couldn't come tonight. Well, we're gonna hold them to another time, so they'll be, hmm, I don't.
I don't know if it's on the agenda and I just have all these.
Yeah, I, shall we go ahead and, go ahead and take public comment on F2? Did you want it, you have two forms here for F2?
Oh, okay.
Just one on F2? Do you want to, you want to do that?
You can speak, we're gonna have Ms. Smith.
We're gonna do it, we'll do it.
Could we, I'm sorry, could we have our public hearing since it's time certain, our public hearing, and then we can come back to F2, F3, even though there's no presentation?
Ah, okay, because we do have to have, sorry, we're gonna have to come back in just a minute, we have to do a F4 because of the time. We're a lot, we're required to do this. Okay, so the public hearing and board review of the Santa Barbara School District's multi-hazard mitigation plan. I open the public hearing, does that sound like what I'm supposed to do? Okay.
And we can turn this over to Dave Hetjank, who's our director of facilities and operations.
Dr. Sarvis, members of the board, with, with the public hearing open, if there's any speakers that wish to speak, now's the time to turn your speaker card.
No, nobody?
If there are no speakers, you may want to close the public hearing and then I can see if there's any board comments.
Okay, close the public hearing.
In 2005, the board authorized the district to apply for a grant to develop this plan. And then later in 2006, the board authorized us to develop the plan. So, we got help from one consultant to fill out our application and get it approved. Then we went to another consultant to actually develop the plan, the same consultant that developed the county's plan, thinking that a lot of the information was the same and we would be cost-effective and time-wise, especially since people with the county, including the fire department, were very pleased with the services they received from that consultant developing the plan. Over the last two years, we've had numerous meetings with teachers, principals, parents, community members, in looking at the different types of hazards in the Santa Barbara area. I think the last two summers have made us all well-aware of the hazards from fire and we're always aware of the hazards from earthquakes, because every once in a while, we feel just a little bit of one, but we've had some significant damage close by in, in cities like Paso Robles and, and Los Angeles. And so, this plan is, is presented to you for comment, for input. It's already gone to the state, the state's already reviewed it, they've provided their comments back to the consultant. And so then any comments we receive from the board or direction from the board or comments from the public hearing, we would give to the consultant and then hopefully bring this back for adoption at the next board meeting.
Okay, I had only.
And I do, I do have the color version of some of these maps, if you did want to see them, I could put them on the overhead. Tried to save a little money and reproduce them in black and white.
Then we can come, we can go and get them from you at some point and look at them. I, I was fascinated by the plan, I actually read, I got all involved in it. But I was curious about, I had two other hazards that you could tell me why they're not listed, um, gas leaks of some sort, or is that just too local to the, to each school? Probably is.
Um, this would be something that's more of a natural hazard, something that we, we would be able to have a project that we would get federal funds for from FEMA or Office of Emergency Services to actually do a project to mitigate future disasters. And a lot of times that money becomes available after a disaster. And if we don't have the plan in place and, and, and we're not approved, then we can't apply for, for those monies. Where if we had a gas line that we knew was defective, it'd be prudent on us to replace that with our deferred maintenance funds, rather than.
Wait till, yes, I get it. And the other one was, the other thing I thought of was a railroad or something that causes a, since we do have railroad going through here, causes some sort of accident which causes some toxic release or something.
Again, again, more of a natural hazard, but I, I would tell you that, that under today's rules, you would not have a school as close to the railroad as, as some of our schools are today, that were, that were placed near a railroad, you know, fifty years ago or so. But, but hopefully the, the railroads are observing the speed limits when they go, when they, when they use those tracks and, and they're, they're inspected regularly as a federal requirement. But, but you can never, you can never be sure, you're right, there, there could be a derailment anyplace and you never know what's being transported, just the same as on a freeway. There, there's just as much hazardous materials being transported on our, on our highways and there's, and, and we just hope that there's not an accident and, and especially not near a school.
Any other comments? Yes.
I thought it was really interesting, too, especially reading the histories of natural disasters locally, but I had a few, just a few quick questions. On two-nine, on the demographics section, it talks about the seventeen state preschool classrooms in the elementary school district. I just wasn't sure when it said, as of October 2007, the Santa Barbara school districts enrolled 5,640 elementary students. Does that include preschool or is that just K6?
That should be K6.
Okay. Then on two-ten, the, in the middle of the page is a paragraph where the last sentence says, similarly, all of the elementary schools in the district offer after-school childcare and are open during the summer from 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on weekdays.
Good job.
And I just didn't know that, so.
I don't, I don't think that's correct and I don't know where they got the information from. I, I know that, uh, there were a lot of comments given by different people and it was my job to read through and edit out and find the errors and this is one that I didn't find.
Okay. And then on page 332, when it's talking about the mitigation advisory committee meetings, there's just a blank for one of the dates and, so I wasn't sure if that was something that needed to.
Oh, I see.
No, 332.
I see, yeah.
It says, October 2006 and blank 2008.
And I can fill that in right off of the agenda memo.
Great, and then, let's see, there was one other similar. And just in section seven, in terms of the plan maintenance, this section, plan maintenance includes a schedule for monitoring and evaluating the plan annually and for revising the plan every five years. And, and I just didn't, I mean, there's a plan, but it's like, we're at '08-'09, so is it possible to include the dates for '08-'09 or how those dates will be determined or?
Yeah, that'd be determined by the date that we put on the front of the plan when we submit it to OES.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, and most of the updates, it would, would be changes that are a result of changes the board authorizes in the facility master plan type process. In other words, we're, we're moving different populations to different sites, we're expanding sites, we have a new site. That, that's basically what's gonna change unless, unless we become susceptible to a new type of hazard.
Gotcha. Okay, those were my comments.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm struggling with my cost, I think my, my concerns were addressed. I was also gonna ask some questions about other hazards that I thought weren't listed, but I think you addressed why they aren't here, so that's, clears it up for me.
Okay, thank you.
Bring it back in two weeks.
Yeah, we don't put on, thank you.
Thank you.
So now, we can go back to F2 and F3, I'll repeat that, that Ms. Carolyn Renard is not here with us tonight, but welcome to have public comments.
We have two public comments on item F2, which, I'll read out, it was for the request to address the board by Carolyn Renard regarding alleged problems due to the district's lack of personnel complaint policy. So first is Ms. Smith, followed by Ms. Uribe.
I had some very serious problems because there was no personnel complaint policy. My son was being kept in, in third grade, kept in for recess to do chapter summaries, but he didn't know how to do them. So, for the whole year, he missed out on recess and nobody checked to see if he was getting his work done and nobody said, gee, there's a problem here, he can't do it. My speech therapist for my daughter, who was non-verbal, had just had a baby, so she wasn't coming to work. And my husband saw a teacher hit my daughter, a full arc swing. I want to say, right now, we loved that teacher, but we had noticed bruises in the fingerprint pattern on my daughter's arm. So, I had complaints and I went to Bonnie Switak and her response was, if you don't leave now, I'll call the police. Now, I'm from Berkeley, during the sixties, I walked across the United States in a political action for nine months, so I know what to do when someone says that. I say, where do you want me to stand? So the police can see me. But I couldn't leave because my son was not out of school yet. She called the police and they came. That was the first of four arrests and Dr. Sarvis has not granted me an appointment, although I've tried all summer to get one. But the school district is in breach of the settlement, you have to expunge the record or I can take you back to court. Now, let me tell you what happened, because there was no complaint procedure for personnel. I went to Diana Rigby, she said I had to go to the police to turn in the teacher. Of course I wouldn't do that, I adored that teacher. Superintendent Flores, Diana Rigby, Principal Switak and Carolyn Appleton perjured themselves in the restraining order declarations and admitted as much in court. And because I told Debbie I would not drag her in front of the public, because we know about perjury from Bill Clinton, in exchange for not destroying their lives and taking them to court and the DA and the grand jury, she put in the expungement. I was called to mediate an IEP that didn't happen. Mediation that brought somebody down from the state, they whited out a date. And you can talk to Rick Seward about that. Bonnie Switak and her husband vandalized my husband's newspaper racks and we had to hire a private investigator and a professional photographer because there was a restraining order and I was not allowed to watch the rack. There was collusion with the DA, there was conspiracy with Selpa, Marsha McClish and Sharon Watt. And I'm not going to be dealing with this in my campaign, so I'm using this opportunity to tell you, there were serious problems with personnel, there was no way to deal with it, but I guess now, Dr. Sarvis will.
And your time is up, so thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you so much.
And it's Lourdes Uribe.
Good evening, my name is Lourdes Uribe and I'm the parent of three kids with special needs. I'm here because of time just to try to speak in behalf of my son. He, he's been waiting since Ms. Joanne Pulley left to have a meeting. He's come a number of times and for different reasons, you know, since February, when I submitted, thinking that Ms. Pulley was gonna leave in June, as she told me, you know, for a meeting. And I have a message, you know, by the special ed director that you're welcome to here, where she says, June twenty, July 22nd for a meeting. I've been leaving messages. I've been leaving messages for five days and I understand that she's probably very busy dealing with all, you know, the situations with students. But my son is twenty-one. He's waited like all his life to get some sort of like education. He was not diagnosed with a disability that is treatable bi medically. He was, I was just told that he was ADD and unable to learn in the classroom. He's about to pass, you know, his reading driving test so he can drive like his brothers. I learned when he was fourteen, Mr. Gonzalez was a principal, that his medical condi, that, that his disability was treatable. And since he was fourteen, I've been working to get treatment. In the process, I had learned that my son at Dos Pueblos, who's gone also without an education because his condition is less visible. He looks wonderful. You should see him. He's about to get his, he's getting his review to get his Eagle Scout right now. I'm hoping, I think he called me to tell me that he passed. He was very nervous. So he's gonna be an Eagle Scout. I probably, that's probably his only achievement that he's done in his life. A, a good one. Being the parent of a kid with a disability, for me, it's been physically draining. You know, I'm sick myself. You know, I have depression and all kind of things because of the pain of seeing my kids not getting a diploma. I was told, Ms. Pulley and the special ed director before told me that he could get a, a high school diploma. He wants a diploma like his sister. I don't see why he shouldn't get one, just because he didn't get diagnosing services. I think he needs to get, needs to get services. I am about to request a hearing because if the special ed director doesn't think it's important, I'm going to get two years of educational services. It's gonna cost, it's gonna cost more, you know, to go back and open the case and everything. So, um, thank you very much for listening. I'm probably gonna be coming back to speak. And, um, just the life of a kid is worth all the money that you can gather altogether. At least the kids that I seen in the special educational program. I mean, I know it's about money, but in reality, I don't think it is.
That's not about money. Well, we'll follow up on Mrs. Uribe's request for an IEP meeting.
Okay. Um, was there anyone who wanted to speak on F three?
No.
No. Okay. So then we're going on. We'll come back to those if we can on some point. Uh, F five, this is our first reading of the five thousand series board policies. This ought to empty the room.
This is the good stuff.
Now it gets exciting.
Thanks to, to Ms. Parker who put this on the agenda. So, any introduction to this before we dive in?
Well, as the board knows, you went through the nine thousand series, the one thousand, two thousand, three thousand. And we're, we're working our way up here essentially. We have systematically gone through all of our board policies to update them. Some dated back to the late sixties and early seventies. Some were as recent as the late nineties. And we work with CSBA. We have a contract with CSBA. They keep our, our board policies online. They're helping us with the changes and they recommend changes when there are new state laws and new ed codes in, in place. So this is what we're proposing for the five thousand series. Initially, there were even board members involved in this process and looking at these policies. Now, this is now a year and a half ago, two years ago. But we've gone through these recently and we would ask you to, in the end, to approve the new policies and to eliminate the old policies. It's a much easier way than to start with each policy and show every little change.
Page by page?
Sure.
Uh, you wanna, well, okay. Uh, one or two or three, four? I have something on five. I'm sorry, I'll wait.
I, I'm sorry, I had a question on number, on page four. Number ten. I just wanted clarification of what that would mean in. This is talking about, um, parents' rights. And it says, for parents or guardians of English learners to support their child's advancement toward literacy. And I'm, I was just wondering what that means in, in practice or what, what is it talking about there?
As far as I know, that's simply ed code language that we pulled in. And it would refer to supporting their child's ability to read and write.
Seems like everybody should, right?
Yeah.
Well, there, I guess I was unclear why we would need to say that students, parents have a right to do this when.
Life liberty in person happens, isn't it?
It, it sounded like it was saying, you know, so I thought there might be something.
These are pretty vague in here, so.
We can take a further look at the ed code and make sure there isn't something missing that, that.
Well, I would appreciate that because I just thought that one didn't quite seem to mean anything.
Yeah.
Didn't have, you know, any serious sort of meaning behind it. So I, I think we may have left something out or.
It continues on.
Or maybe there's something more.
It does continue on to the next page.
It does. And I wondered, oh, I'm sorry, that was part of my question too. Does this happen currently? The superintendent of district may make available, to the extent possible, surplus undistributed instructional materials to parents and guardians.
Well, actually, we make material, all materials available that, that students need. And I know this dresses, addresses surplus materials. We go through a surplus process. And to my knowledge, I don't think that this has happened.
I was under the impression that this, that this meant a little bit along the lines of supporting their, or advancing their, making advancement towards literacy, that it meant providing parents with perhaps out-of-date textbooks or things, unused workbooks that they could then use to help their students.
We're more interested in giving them all the up-to-date materials.
That's true, but I have. But that's part of their, that would be part of their curriculum. I, I was seeing this as something that they might just be able to use as, as some sort of support.
And I have to say that I was in the cafeteria at Adam's School today where there were probably twenty big boxes of surplus open court workbooks that are now out of date, that are all labeled District Office. And they're coming to the district office, but I don't know what happens to them when they get to the district office.
We surplus them. We declare them surplus materials. We bring that declaration to the board. The board has to approve those materials as surplus. And then we can distribute them. We can send them to auction. We can do any number of things. And what we would do in this case is to.
Because it'd be great to, you could take them to EEL meetings. You could have them at parent meetings at, at our high EEL schools.
Right.
It'd be interesting.
Okay, well, can I, the last thing on page sixteen was my question. Yeah, number sixteen. I'm sorry, page five, number sixteen. That a parent can, can ask not to have their child, to deny permission to give a test. Is that, I thought we, they weren't allowed to do that.
You can turn it down.
You can, yes, you can turn down having a test. I mean, the parent has the right to approve or disapprove their child participating in a test, psychological testing.
Okay. I'm surprised. I feel like. Okay, six. Seven.
I, I had something on seven.
Me too. See, the same thing.
Me.
Well, one was putting in a dash in co-curricular, since that's the way we usually use it. But mine was number four, monitoring and regulating the television viewed by their child. Because I thought maybe that should be switched to technology used by their child, since it's so much broader than TV anymore.
I, this is gonna definitely show my bias. I thought we should add reading to the child and or having the child read to them. Since fostering good literacy skills and language development affects so many other areas of the student's learning.
Yeah, and it's nice to specify that too.
Good one. Eight or nine? Ten.
I'm sorry, I had a global question about the policy. And this actually maybe affects, is related to page nine, but it might actually affect other, other policies that are in here as well. What, in, where would I, where would we find the policy on, that covers sex education?
It's in the six thousand series.
It's health instruction, yes. In fact, let me make a general comment. These are about students and policies about students which, well, you've already seen a lot of the different categories. The next section will be about instructional programs.
I, I guess I was wondering in terms of health and in terms of what kinds of information or services we provide relative to sex education, would those, would that information be under the program or would it be under our health policies?
We just.
I'm, I'm, because I don't mean, I guess I said a sex education, but I don't necessarily mean just the instructional portion of it. I mean also whatever kinds of services or information is provided by our health, by our health programs.
Barbara, can you answer that question? Okay. Well, we'll research it. Good.
Eight, nine. Anything on ten?
For me, on ten, at the top, it said, notwithstanding the above requirements, the districts may administer to students in grades seven to twelve, anonymous, voluntary, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But the Healthy Kids Survey hits at fifth grade. And so I'm just wondering if it should be five to twelve or if this is referencing sort of a different function. At the very top of page eleven.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Well, ed code language is seven through twelve. And we also administer in, in fifth grade. Whether you'd like to institutionalize that through our board policies.
I thought it was through ed code that we had to do the Healthy Kids Survey and, or not maybe ed code, but some law that we had to do it in fifth grade.
I think it's tied to, well, it was originally tied to funding or special grant funding.
Mr. Gonzalez.
You are correct. There is a regulation that requires us to provide a select group of students with the Healthy Kids Survey every other year. Our grant proposal that is now terminated, part of the evaluation process required the annual distribution of that Healthy Kids Survey.
Well, so if that's an ed code requirement, we should draw it in probably here.
It's, uh, to, to further clarify, it's a requirement of our, one of the categorical programs, specifically Title Four.
So it's not an ed code requirement. It's a Title Four requirement, which is grant funding.
The district makes a decision to participate in Title Four via the consolidated application.
But, but we do, so we do need to have it so that our board policy allows us to do it. So I think that should be switched to grades five to twelve. And that's referenced again on page thirteen.
And it's permissible. It's may administer. So I, I don't see any problem with that.
Can I say something else on page eleven or?
Mm-hmm.
I really don't. Don't, maybe don't understand this, but any, in the middle, any district restriction regarding collection of personal, shall not apply to the following things, I think. The fifth one makes no sense. The sale by students of products or services to raise funds for school-related or educated-related activities. What, I don't understand.
I was confused by that one too.
You know, I could see how the other ones are okay, but why would we wanna sell products?
Well, the students do. The students, they do it for ASB clubs and so on and so forth, but I'm just not sure how.
How, why would you want?
We're usually not, uh, I don't know how it ties into student information.
Well, it's just a question.
We can ask on that one, yeah.
Yeah, I'll let you guys.
And I had a, a question on this one too. Number one, are we required to include military recruitment?
Yes, we are required to, although we have a parent opt-out and we do not submit the names of students whose parents have opted out of that.
Okay. And that was somewhere else in here.
Yes. Nevertheless, the military does get names through other sources, just as they, just as kids receive credit card applications. We find that military is soliciting among, among our, our high school students through other sources.
Just to clarify, it's the no child left behind law that requires access for military to our students. And you're correct. The current opt-out letter that is sent to the high school students asks parents to give their authorization, their permission to send that directory-type information to military recruiters. And in the same letter, it also gives the student parent permission to meet with college recruiters. It's all in one form.
You still, no, we're done. I'm sorry, page twelve, again, the last thing, the collection of personal information from students for marketing. I don't get that one either. Okay, you're on fourteen?
We'll find out what's behind that.
Yeah, what are they talking about? Do you have something on fourteen?
Just on fourteen, something really minor, which is that on number five, it's listed as health, education, nutrition, and physical activity. But then the following paragraphs are not in that order. So my suggestion would simply be to move physical activity to the front of that list so that it mirrors the, that the next, you know, the first paragraph talks about physical activity and then it matches up the rest of the way through.
Okay. Page fifteen, I have something, but you have to give me a second. It's that staff shall encourage parents to enroll all school-aged children in school. Ah, how do we do that?
Well, that, I had that, I had a question on that same sentence, but I wondered, in terms of homeschooling, does this, is this saying that we're gonna advocate enrolling in an actual school over homeschooling?
Right. Were we then supposed to discourage?
Right.
To my mind, that would include having school-aged children enroll in home school, in the home school program.
So homeschool would be considered being enrolled in school? Okay.
And.
Which is.
Also, there is no law, if I'm correct, that they have to, a person has to have their kid in kindergarten. Is that, it's.
That's right. Kindergarten is voluntary.
But the way this is written, it's that we're supposed to encourage them, right? And I'm not sure how we would supposedly do that, but I just.
Well, this is encouraged to enroll.
It's the word encourage, I guess is, yeah.
I mean, our child development coordinators, Teresa Wise Glass, our health, healthy start advocates, there are a lot of people that we, we'd consider staff that do encourage parents to enroll their students in school.
Um, I'm just gonna go a couple more pages here because we're, I can, I can see that Ms. Cordero is gonna need her voice to teach. It's very important. So we're gonna let her go.
I appreciate and I apologize that if, that I'm coughing through our meeting, but.
No, we understand. Is there anything on sixteen? Oh, is there anything about, um, parents who decide to enter their kids a year late? There's, it never, it never really addresses that, that, it says you have to have your child in when they're five and so forth. But some people do wait a year, don't they?
Some do red shirt, yes.
That's what it's called.
Are you speaking at the last line, where a child who will have reached the age of six shall be eligible for enrollment in the first grade?
Yeah, but it doesn't address, well, what happens if at age six, they're putting him in kindergarten? Or age?
You know, if they're turning six before December 2nd, there are many kids these days that are going to kindergarten. But I don't know if that needs to be...
Somehow, it makes it sound like that can't happen, and I don't know.
It just shall be eligible.
Yeah, I didn't really get that impression, that it says it can't happen. I agree that it doesn't clarify what, what should occur, or what are the possibilities of what can occur.
And how is that, I mean, it seems like there's a, there could be a range of policies there. I mean, who decides? Does a parent decides to? Yeah, it's totally up to the parent, but if a child comes into kindergarten, and is it possible for the school to say, or the teacher to say, this child needs to wait a little bit? I mean, I don't know how that all works. You, no.
No, I mean, of course, you can give advice, but parent, parents have that right.
Well, and, you would rather have that student in school rather than sitting out that school year or having a program.
Maybe being in preschool would be a more appropriate place. Well, I guess it's something that the teachers talk to the parents about.
Yes, they do. In fact, we, every once in a while, we'll have a child that goes to preschool. But our child development program has priority for four-year-olds, and so it's, they're, they, the five-year-olds don't have priority in those programs that are state programs.
Problem. Well, is this a good place to end? At criteria for residency on page 17? Okay, we do have a few little business things to take care of still. So, if we could go back, I'm, I know we're disappointed.
No, I'm more disappointed that we're going back to the consent agenda at this point.
Well, there isn't much to do here with the consent agenda. We have a lot of things pulled, but unless one, somebody else has a comment about any one of them, do I hear a motion?
Let me just check what he was getting at with the D1.
I was gonna say something about retirements, but I, you know, at this, late in the meeting.
Move to approve the minutes of May 27th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, it passes 3-0.
I'll move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry. Any opposed? It passes 3-0. Okay, then we have, oh my gosh, I am now all messed up. Board upcoming events, board comments and correspondence, future agenda items. I want to, oh, what's happening to me? The next regularly scheduled meeting is the 8?
No.
When's the city joint meeting?
Well, the city joint meeting is September 12th. It's a Friday afternoon.
Afternoon?
Yeah, I believe it's 1:30, but, but I don't, I don't think the board president and I set that yet.
Okay, okay. Alrighty, then, September 12th. In that case, I adjourn the meeting.